Everyone and welcome to this meeting of the Children and Young People Overview and Scrutiny Committee. Do we have any apologies Helen?
No, we don't.
Okay, do you have any public speakers?
No.
Okay, and before we go on to question time, I just wanted to alert members to correspondence I had at the end of last year from Marion Plant, who is the Chief Executive of the Midland Academy Trust. As you'll remember, the Academy Trust and the results and performance over the last couple of years was discussed at a committee meeting on the 26th of October. And it was Marion got in touch because she thought that some of the comments were unfair and inaccurate factually. And I promised that I would raise those concerns at a meeting, just so that they were public. And of course, committee members will have the opportunity to meet with representatives from the mat in the near future, and I hope at a committee meeting in the near future. I did share the correspondence with members, so do go back and have a look at that. Any other questions? You can get in touch with me.
Can I add any comments to that Chair? We're not allowed to do that at this point.
You can even comment, but...
I'm going to be very brief. I did say at the very start of our term that we'll be here today and gone tomorrow before any real major improvement has taken place. And I believe I still stand by that. And obviously with the last 12 months, an even more, a greater gap has been generated with education of children in our community, and I still stand by it. Where are the the green shoots and so on? Fantastic, but we are near enough gone. You know, come May, some of us may not be here, and some of us won't be here. And who carries that torch on? It's another two or three years of people finding their feet, getting used to the regime and getting used to the challenges and no improvement again. Once again, that very quick academic clock is ticking for these people. That's my point.
It is something that I explained to Marion, and I'm sure that everyone here, everyone's on the same page in that all we want is the best for the children. It doesn't really matter about the institution, whether that be us, or even the schools, or all that's at the forefront of our minds is the children, whether they're from a leafy Warwickshire village or an urban area that's considered an area of deprivation. We just want those children to have the ability to reach their full potential, no matter where they come from. And that's what's at the forefront of all of our minds. And those comments that were made on the 26th weren't made by any member disparaging the teaching staff at the the schools. It was simply us wanting the best for those children and identifying how we as councillors and as an authority can help those schools, ensure those children get the best education they can. But it's something we'll explore in greater depth. Hopefully at another public meeting and later on. Okay, question time. Do we have any questions to Cabinet or portfolio holders from members? No? Do we have any updates from members? We do. Geoff?
Morning, everyone. Yeah, there are a few things I'd like to say. Firstly, I've spoken to a lot of you about the children's home that we're hoping to open in Stratford-upon-Avon. And I think a planning application has been submitted for that now. So we're, you know, we're we're working forward on that one, and there is progress there. If you remember, that's designed to be an off-stead, regulated Warwick County Council children's home for up to four young young children, probably up to about the age of 12 at the moment. But the planning application has gone in, so we are moving that forward. We, in terms of the overall demand, we are managing at the I think we all are looking forward with some trepidation to the 8th of March. Not that I don't think children should be at school, far from it. But I think we are worried that the 8th of March might be a point when the lid is taken off, and there could be all sorts of historical problems that might come to the surface at that point when children go back to school. At the moment, we're coping and case loads for social workers are pretty good. They're under 16 at the moment, even though we've got over 800 children in care, which is the highest that Warwickshire's ever had. The last thing I want to say, and I don't think this is coming up in the agenda, is I'd like to just mention COOTH. K double O T H, not COOTH as in uncouth, but K double O T H, which is an online platform designed for children and young people who have who have mental health issues. We're rolling this out to some of our most vulnerable children, and it should enable kids to self-diagnose, to get help 24/7, and for our teams to be able to contact them. I shan't say any more about it because it's better, to be honest, if you just Google COOTH, K double O T H, and have a look. There is an introductory video there, and that'll give you an idea of one of the things we're trying to do to address the issue of mental health with young people. Hope that helps Chairman.
Thanks Geoff. Margaret?
Thank you. Geoff, can I just ask about the number of children we've got in care? You know, you say it's more than we've ever had. Have we managed to get them into foster care, or have we got children in children's homes perhaps out of county more than normal?
We have, part of that is yes. Yes, we do have children in in homes out of county, not very many though. And I'm not aware that that number has has gone up. The the 800 plus children in care, of course, includes unaccompanied asylum-seeking children. And we have no control over over that, as you as you know. But the number is high, but because we were able to recruit additional social workers, and we were pretty successful with that, the average caseload numbers have come down. I hope that helps Margaret.
Corinne?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask if, how are we going to promote this COOTH to young people and make sure that they know about it? Because it's great that we know, but we need them to know, don't we?
I would, I would imagine Corinne, that we'll have a campaign through our comms team. But I'll take a note to follow that one up and make sure that it happens. So thank you for, thanks for raising that.
Pam? You're on, you Pam?
Sorry about that. I just wanted to ask who runs COOTH, Geoff? Do we know? Who is it managed by?
It's managed by some third party. I don't know. I took a look at the website. It looked kosher. It looked good. The sort of thing that our our kids would would probably use. But I don't know. I would imagine it's a charity of some sort. That's something else for me to check up on. You're giving me jobs today, aren't you?
Yeah. I just think there's so much out there that young people can be vulnerable to. I'd just like to make sure that we're not pointing them in the direction of something that's going to create more difficulties than solves.
Okay, I've got that. Thank you very much.
Nigel wants to come in.
Yeah, if I could, Chair, if I could just say that COOTH is is a tool that we've used before, and it's used by a number of local authorities. It's something that has had a real impact in the past. And I would expect it to be of use in this period too. It is a dedicated company that does this work. It has properly trained and accredited councillors that are supporting. So it is something that, you know, we are very much on top of in terms of quality. The other thing I would add is is roll out through schools is probably the most likely route moving forward.
Corinne, do you want to come back in?
Yes, sorry, I just wanted to ask, do we have contracts with other children's homes apart from the ones that we're kind of, you know, beginning through the council ourselves? Do we have contracts with other companies?
Nigel, I think your best place to answer that one.
Yeah, so so there are a range of different arrangements. We, there is a West Midlands framework, so all the local authorities, children trusts in the region come together to create a framework, which is quality assured, which people obviously have to meet a standard to be on the framework. And we effectively buy individual children's placements from the framework. That is probably the main route. We have some dedicated contracts with individuals about particularly, for example, crisis beds, short-term arrangements. We have specialist arrangements where we have contracts, for example, with Barnardo's about youth justice placements. So there are some specialist ranges, and there are occasionally. We also spot purchase payments, so we just go out and find a suitable placement and buy it from a particular organisation at that time. The preferred method when we can is always that we use the the West Midlands framework. But of course, placements aren't always available. There is a national shortage, so there are some challenges about that.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Are there any other updates from either portfolio holders or from officers? Okay, on to item four then, which is the formulation of the education sufficiency strategy, and I'm looking for Bern Timings and Rosalind Curran.
They don't appear to be here Chair, so I will just try and call them in.
Right, is Ross or Ross and Dwayne here?
Yes, Youssef, I'm here, rather than Dwayne.
Are you are you happy for us to come on to you now and then we'll go back to four?
Yes.
Ready? Okay. Let's go on to the the Send and Inclusion Report of the Task and Finish Group then, and over to Ross, she's agenda item five.
Thank you. So we've had four four meetings of the Send and Inclusion Task and Finish Group, which was set up following a motion to County Council. And I'm pleased, I hope we had some really good discussion and debate over those four sessions. The first two were very much kind of information sessions. And then there's a number of members on this committee who are on that group, and I hope they share with me that there's some good discussion, varied debates as well, in looking at different aspects of SEND. How we fund our services, what provision is out there. And together, we collectively went through, and the recommendations are set out in section three. We have 12 recommendations in all. I won't go through all of them. A numbered link directly to projects which already exist in the Send and Inclusion Change Programme, but really kind of clarify an emphasis where members really want to see some some changes, particularly around early intervention, around workforce development. There are a number in there which which weren't linked to the programme as well, which members raised as as being important things to to address. The intention is that all 12 recommendations are agreed by this group and indeed go forward to Cabinet on the 18th of March.
Right, thanks Ross. Okay, I'm just going to open up the floor for questions immediately. I was on the task and finish group, as were others in in this committee, so it may be that those who weren't wish to have their say now. Well, I'm over to Pam first.
While I was on the committee as well, Youssef, but I just thought it was a really useful and productive committee, and I think we got through a lot of work and a lot of issues and addressed a lot of the information that was coming forward. So yeah, I think the recommendations really hit the mark, so hopefully they will be approved today. Thanks Ross. Thanks for all your help and thanks to Dwayne as well. Very useful. And Ian, don't forget Ian.
Corinne?
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, I know I spoke to Helen, and I know that they were pleased with the outcome of the group. Obviously, the the recommendations, but the one that I'd really like to see, and I do hope Cabinet do approve this, is the sort of Establisher Members Panel. I think that would be a great idea as a kind of checklist going forward, because obviously, you know, the the initiative with SEND is is still in its early days, and obviously, we don't really know how that's going to go, given the way that schools have been for the last year. So I'd really like to to see that happen. Yeah, thank you.
Helen, is there any chance that you could put the the report on the screen and share it, just in case we do have anybody viewing?
Yes, bear with me one second.
Thank you.
I'm going to share my screen.
Thanks. You could just go to to three and the and the recommendations and then just probably scroll through, and that'd be really helpful. Thank you. Jonathan?
Thank you Chair. Yes, I wasn't part of the group. And so my question is to those of you that were on the committee. Have you come out of the group feeling any more confident that we can like address the massive challenges we face in SEND in terms of the need going up and the resources not going up? You know, it seems such a massive quandary for us as an authority to try and give the children the support they need within the resources. Have you come out feeling any more hopeful about that than maybe when you went into the group?
For me personally, yeah, I certainly did. But I think, let's be honest, we are, as a political organisation, there were different political parties represented on the task and finish group. We always say that we're going to be apolitical when we look at things, but there is the danger of things becoming political. And I think it's a great testament to what the recommendations were, that there was complete consensus amongst everyone as to us being behind these 12 recommendations, which we tweaked, and putting them forward to Cabinet in the hope that they would be adopted. So for me personally, yes. Wants to come in, and she was on on the task and finish group as well.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely Jonathan. I think it was a real testament to us all working together. And for the children that are going to be using the services, it was really interesting that one of the key things, and I think it's come as number two, it's on pass now, but is early intervention. And it's something, we had two members of the Teaching Fraternity came to present, do presentations to us. One was the head of a special school, and one was the head of a mainstream school. And their comments were really informed the group in terms of the work that can be done and going forward. Their their positive approach to looking after children with special needs, either in mainstream schooling or in special stream schooling, showed that that we are moving forward, and we have got the resources and the will. I think it's it's not just the resources, it's also the will within the schools to actually do this. But prioritise early identification and early intervention is is key to moving this forward. And I think one of the things that I'd like to see was to would be to look at more nursery provision. And that's probably going to be the most expensive part of it. But it was very clear that everybody wanted to move in the same direction after hearing everything that was discussed. So I think these these recommendations, hopefully they will be approved and we can move forward.
Okay, thank you. Margaret?
Thank you. Yes, I agree. It was it was a really good group, and and there was a great deal of consensus with the recommendations. For me, the key issues are, obviously, that the emphasis was as far as possible dealing with the children in mainstream school. And as long as we give the schools the support, and for me, that was the key thing, the schools need that support to be able to provide this this range of offerings to their pupils. I think the other thing for me is that as this goes forward, we need to keep checking in with the teachers and with the parents. How is it going? We need to keep getting that feedback. And and one of the parts of the report is about ensuring parents have got a dashboard that they can look at. What what should they be expecting to happen? And is, so they can say, is it happening? So they've got some feel of control over the situation as well. So I think we need to give people the information they need. We need to give schools the support, and we need to keep checking in. Is it going the way that we expected it to go? But I do think there's real hope here that we can move things forward in a positive way.
Okay, are there any other comments? Thanks Margaret. Any other comments? It's all from from members about the recommendations, the report more broadly, task and finish group. Are we happy to approve the recommendations as they're set out?
Yes.
Yes.
Any dissenting voices on that? Okay. I think we can take that as approved then. All right, thank you, and thanks to Ross as well. He was brilliant throughout. Okay.
Thank you.
Back to you, back to item four. I do think, I think I saw Bern appear only a couple of seconds after he moved on, so I do with that. So thanks for holding on to us, and over to you for the formulation of the education sufficiency strategy.
Thank you councillors. And so the report outlines the thought processes and the practicalities that go into the education sufficiency planning in Warwickshire. And it's often a very complex process with lots of moving parts. And general Warwickshire is growing in terms of the need for pupil places in line with the significant housing development we know about across the county. We have to strike a balance in all of our sufficiency planning between meeting that need for future places, opening new schools, expanding new schools, but also conscious of our existing school estates, our existing school partners, making sure that they retain their their long-term viability, and so they can continue to attract the pupils they have in the past. And anything on top of that is extra to meet the coming demands in the future. And my real hope is that we want to make sure that transparency is increased around this process. It's often sort of mystifying or a bit of a dark art in terms of forecasting pupil numbers with yourselves, with members, but also with schools as well. And looking at a much more partnership working where everyone can see what we're trying to achieve and the reasons for that. It's increasingly difficult in the mixed economy we have these days with with many of our schools being academies, particularly our secondary schools, and the autonomy they have in in this process in setting their own admission arrangements, or indeed their own admission numbers, in terms of how many students they admit into their schools. So we want to make sure that we can try and move that forward in a transparent way as well, so that they can work together more as not as individual academies, but together as groups for the benefit of Warwickshire children, but also so we can meet our sufficiency duties as well. So really, I think you advanced for any any comments members may have on on the process as I've outlined in the report. Any particularly areas we think with further explanation would be good? And try and, as I say, make it more transparent. Or any areas where members think we should look at some improvements or additional work that maybe we're not in the take at the moment, that's an area to be to be factored in. Thank you.
Margaret?
Thank you. Thanks very much Bern for the report. One of the things, I can understand that this is really complex. It is a really complex thing to look at. But one of the things I've always been puzzled by is our lack of response or slow response to things that are obviously coming through the system. And and for me, one of the measures is how many temporary classrooms we have to put up. Now, I can understand it. If we've got a bulge year, just one single class that's sort of bulging its way through the school, I can see that a temporary classroom might be the right thing because it will pass through and then it'll be gone. But where we got, so you'll be familiar, in my area, we had an extra class in the infant school, which then went on to the junior school, which will in the future go to the secondary school. So we had a few years' notice that that class was going to hit the junior school. But we didn't have the class ready. So we, I think it was a year or maybe even two years, we had to pay for a temporary classroom and then pay for the extension. And that must be costing us money. So, you know, why can't we turn these things around when we know that the number of children is going to hit that school in two or three years' time? I just don't understand why we can't respond to that.
No, that's a fair point councillor. I think on, with any capital projects, there are always unforeseen delays unfortunately, which I mitigate as much as possible. And an example you've given there, I think it is, you're exactly right, it was a lack of forethought in the planning way back whenever it was originally thought of the expansion in the infant stages. And moving forward, very much taking a more proactive approach, that's a, that's not the case, and the temporary classrooms are just for those emergency, or there's a bulge class that's popped up because the birth rates increased that we didn't expect. As you said, it is those those small borders rather than, you know, we planned for this, but we haven't quite met it, so the temporary classroom has to come into play. And it's a good point. I'll take that point, and we'll make sure that's, that's where we go. It's all about forward plan, our capital forward plan, getting our capital programme, the forward plan for that right, and getting enough time in to be able to deliver the schemes that we need for the right time is is the challenge there. And I will address that issue.
Thank you. Sorry Chairman, if I might come back. Thank you. That's really helpful. And I think for this committee, one of the one of the measures that we need to keep an eye on are the number of temporary classrooms that we have across the county. How long they're there for? Are they replaced by full buildings? And how much are they costing us? Because it must be a real expense that we can actually avoid by being a little bit sharper and a bit more feet of foot.
Thanks Margaret. Corinne?
Sorry, trying to trying to unmute and unblock myself. Yeah, I mean, would this now be a good time to give us an update on things like the Hartstow building improvement? I mean, will that building also have a greater capacity? Because obviously, we have got sort of building in that area, and lots of children from the Camp Hill Ward will be going to Hartstow. And also with regards to the the new school that our believer has now been approved for Top Farm. When do we anticipate that, that beginning, the building of those?
Yeah, I'll give an update on that, of course. And so the Warwickshire was successful in getting three rebuilds, part of the government's National 50 Schools that are being rebuilt, and the first wave of their rebuilding programme, which is excellent news first of all, because those schools, I think, anyone that's been to Hartstow will more than welcome the the new buildings on that school site without a doubt. And we did enter in conversations with the the DFE around whether we could future-proof those builds. And because we've had all three areas are expected future growth. And unfortunately, the DFE weren't keen to look at an expanded school delivery. They wouldn't deliver it for a start. They would ask Warwickshire to pay for it. And they were only going to deliver the replacement, like-for-like as it were. But they are working to such a timeline that unfortunately, any anything that could delay that programme, particularly around highways works, or anything that needs to be done in the larger area, that would come with an expanded school. And they were very reversed to including in this programme. It was very much more about replacement. But we did talk about with the DFE- But we did talk about with the DFE whether we could future proof some of the ancillary spaces in those schools, slightly larger dining spaces, et cetera. And and we progressed that and and did have some conversations. But unfortunately, the timeline of the DFE were working to didn't allow for the county council to do the necessary due diligence on those elements once the costs were known. And assess the value for money against our existing commitments. Because all three schools where the suspension is needed, it isn't for, it isn't in the short term, it's more to medium to long term at those areas. So Hartsoe, yes, you're right, there is a need to expand it in a few years when the housing development comes along. But in terms of across the county compared to where we've got immediate pressures, the capital is needed to be spent elsewhere. At the moment, the the pressures are elsewhere. And the Top Farm, I'm trying to remember what it's called now, uh Hymn Lane North Academy is going to be called. And that is an imprincipal approval as part of the government's Way fourteen preschool programme. And so the DFE will deliver that school, and that is a nine hundred place eleven to sixteen school. And at the moment, it is an imprincipal approval. It wasn't officially approved as part of the Way fourteen and pending a couple of um conditions around the section one six or development agreement being secured for the overall Top Farm site within the next year, it says, I think, by May twenty twenty two. And then there's some conditions around whether the DFE will be able to get into contract to deliver the school by twenty twenty or to be in contract by twenty twenty four to deliver the school, both of which I think are achievable. And there's some work within Warwickshire County Council's gift on the first one, because we are the landowner of Top Farm. And so our colleagues in property services and strategic assets are working on that now. And but that's about twenty million pound investment. I think that's for each each new school, it's about twenty million pound investment into Warwickshire. So we've got sort of eighty plus million pounds investment in in one first week from the DFE, uh three, four hundred it was.
Hey, thank you.
Dan.
Yeah, thanks, Dan. Thanks, Bern. Morning. Morning. My my question really is about the uh we've talked about the mat already, and it's about parental preference, which is in the report. And it's it's just really how we plan for or what what we have in place for the parents to choose other schools apart from the ones that are on their doorstep. Uh some of which, obviously, if if you're in this triangle of, you know, Hartstill, Gallic Common, all the west side of Llaneta and that area, where you're surrounded by two of them at schools and their their choices are to to go elsewhere. Um out of four choices. And it's really, I know, we we sometimes, we don't have an issue. There are spaces in other schools, so they do get to go there. But if we get to a point where, you know, there's there's a massive amount wanting to go elsewhere and that, you know, these schools are under capacity, but others are over, um how we deal with that really? And then obviously, the the next point on to that is, as 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 I just mentioned, the the buildings in Hartstill. We've got the same down the road in Gallic Common. But again, we've had the temporary schools for the school road, temporary classrooms. But capacity, we've got seven hundred houses uh pretty much built now. There's most of them, we've had half them built, there's people living in these houses. And who then opposite, you know, an infant school that's been there for years. Um so people down the road whose children would go to this tiny infant school and then otherwise would go to Hartstill, what we can really have in place for these these young children who are going up to them schools? And and again, I you know, I understand that depending on the birth rates that year and how many got it in certain years, there there may not be massive capacity issues. But it's how we go through the process then of the people that are moving in opposite this school and on the doorstep of this new school compared to the ones that the children have gone to the school and they live, you know, a five, ten minute walk away.
Before you come in, I just ask anyone who's not on the committee or an officer talking to the agenda item, could you switch your cameras off for me, please? Over to you, Ben.
Thank you, Chair. Um thank you, yes. So parental preference uh is always a very difficult one. And the when it comes to the kind of situation described there, parents are choosing to go elsewhere and not choosing their local schools. This is where we talked about the balance of talk about the balance early between ensuring our existing schools are sustainable. And there's work to be done with our school on our school improvement side, making sure that all of our schools are attractive to parents and are good schools, outstanding schools. And so it tracks that then those schools become popular and the local children want to go there. And but ultimately, it falls back onto the admissions process and and the admissions code. And it's just very clear that if if we can't offer their parents the school they have chosen, we give them an unplaced offer of a school place. And which is usually the the nearest school with available space. So in the case like that, if you lived in the area, and it's say, it's say, for I mean, the Newton Academies area, and you chose to go to Hymn Lane, you just put that one school down. You didn't get in because it's miles away. The system and the admissions process we have allocated would allocate you a school place at your nearest local school with a space, which in this instance would more than likely be the Newton Academy. And so that's how the admissions process works. And that's a that's a transparent process. It's written down. It's it's a national, we follow the national guidance on that, the admissions code. So that's how that's dealt with. And our model does pick, our forecasting model does look at parental preference trends year on year, where are people choosing to get sending their children to school? And where they're successful in getting into school. And and that is built into our numbers. So somewhere, particularly with grammar schools in the county, it can cause a slight skewing of the numbers because lots of children from lots of parts of the county choose to go to grammar school over their local school. But that is built into our model and we do factor those those kind of uh difficulties in. I think on the specifics around the the Gallic Common area, I'll have to have a look at the numbers. I think maybe we can have a a conversation or a little workshop around that separately. And because there's a couple of moving parts, there are different housing developments at different stages. And and there are some limited factors in this particularly Gallic Common School. In terms of the site side, you can't do much on that side because it is so small, unfortunately. And in terms of in year applications, which I think was the other point we were getting to, when families are moving into the area, particularly with the new housing, this is a difficulty. It's difficulty across the council, across the county, difficulty across the country. And you move into an area your local school is for because it's popular. Uh we have no provision within the legislation, the code, the emissions code that allows us to hold school places and for families that are moving into an area. Or indeed, lots of the popular schools, particularly, say, in the north of the county, that are situated very close to county borders. Whenever we put new school places on, they will fill up from other children from elsewhere. And so you you have the same situation three months later with families moving in because those additional places we had notionally put on would be full. So it is it is a delicate balance and it is difficult. And sometimes it is a case that transport is the option to another school and under the transport policy. But it's something we monitor very closely. And another part of my role is lead commission for the admissions service as well. So I do keep a a a good close eye on what's going on on the ground in terms of where applications are coming in and where the children being allocated. And then we have conversations with school about can we offer in year classes? Can we expand bulge classes midway through the school year, say, year three? Can there be mixed classes to try and address their viability issues because schools want to be full, to be sustainable? And so it is something we keep a watching brief on. Thank you.
Did you want to come back in, Dan, or?
Uh no, that that's brilliant, Bern. Thank you. I think the it'd be good to have a conversation about what we can do with this specific issue of Gallic Common. But I I understand obviously that happens across the county. And it's just get more of an idea really, because like you say, the the school's limited, they can't expand and the the amount of houses going up. And there is an issue and it's something we talk about for the people that have lived here for a while. And it comes up all the time. But but yeah, if we could have a conversation, that'd be great.
Yeah, of course.
Perfect. Thank you. Thanks, Chair.
Jonathan.
Uh thank you, Chair. Um yeah, I recognize the massive challenge that this is. Um is it is helpful to see some more of the the model. Um so I've got a couple of questions. The first one is about um have you, do you go back and look about how accurate your predictions were using the model? Um and kind of related to that, like so in my area, I think probably the most difficult thing to predict is the is not the people that children that were born in the area and then have have um come into school because you've got five years' notice of them. But it's the people that, you know, children of Jaguar Land Rover contractors, European nationals either coming in or not coming in anymore. Um and so my understanding is you use GP data for that. But is do you find that that is actually like, do all all parents register their children with GP? Is that an act? Does that give you an accurate indication or are the problems with that kind of data?
Thank you, councillor. And so on the on the first question, the accuracy of our predictions. And we do go back and we check it. That's why we revise our forecasting model every year. It's done, in fact, my colleague's doing it as we speak. It's done in the springtime, ready for submission for the SCAP in April. And appendix two on my report is is the DFE published scorecard, which deals with how accurate forecasts are across all authorities. And for both primary and secondary, let's just see, we are one year ahead for primary, about three point three percent in the positive accurate. So we were forecasting a little bit, which in terms of planning for school places is a much better position to be than being three percent under forecasting. Because that means we've got a slight slight enough, just slightly too many school places and across the county as a whole. But that doesn't mean to say there won't be localized issues as in South Flemington. Without a doubt, there's lots of housing going up very quickly, lots of houses, families moving in very quickly. And so the GP data gives us a good starting point. And we take it from, so when a child is born, is 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 naught. That data, we track that year, year on year, and that that cohort will increase until they get to school age. We do see a live trend in that in that data increasing as more families move into the area between having the birth of their child and actually getting ready to go to school. And on top of that, we also look at the actual trends of what happened to that data. So we do uh look at over the school years, it's the in year movement, as it were. How many families moved into an area? How many applied for school places? And across each area in the forecasting model, we apply a factor to to either uplift that or decrease that depending on what what's needed as historical trends tell. And we double check that we're not double counting anything against housing growth in the area because we don't want to, we don't want to count twice. We we make one set of assumptions, we don't count it twice. And but ultimately, it is always an assumption. It's based on the historical data and it's it's as an informed assumption as we can be made. But unfortunately, families never turn up in the in the way that I've assumed, you know, the, I think in Warwick, it's three point five children per hundred homes per year group. It it never quite happens that way. That's that's roughly how it happens over the over the longer period. But on the on the day to day, it families turn up however they turn up, don't they, of course? So it is very much a case of making sure we've got a right amount of flexibility in the system and to deal with those changes. And for example, last year in Rugby, we had something like a hundred and twenty uh year, four children moving in one year alone. And our forecast did not do that. Uh we had no historical data to base that on. It was just, that's what happened in that given year. And so now we we are aware of that and we monitor that, particularly with new schools as such as Holton opening in that area. That trend may continue. So we'll keep an eye on it and adjust our model accordingly. But it is very much an issue of process that continues to be monitored and we continue to fine tune wherever we can.
Can I come back, Chair?
Sure.
Yep. So do you have, on the housing development side, do you have sight of, like, knowing that if certain types of houses, both size and other types of houses, that you're able to make a like, how accurate an estimate you made to say, right, we know the developer's saying they're building thirty two bedroom houses. We think on average that means that's the kind of house that a parent with young children will have. And therefore, we expect, whereas a bigger house maybe is maybe more of a house where teenagers are likely to live. And that are you able to sort of gain that kind of insight or?
Yeah, it's it's not one that we have based into our current model at the moment. We did have um that level of detail, the housing type mix in in a in a early registration of our our people yield calculation. And but again, it's all about accuracy. Are we getting the right data from the developers? Are they telling us accurate which houses they're going to build? How quickly does that change? And even then, it's still just an assumption. And so it may help refine a little bit, but it's it's still an assumption because and particularly in an area like Linton, Warwick, or Stratford, where it's a bit more affluent. There's nothing to say that actually a two bedroom house is going to have a young family in it. It may have a and maybe it's part of the the orbit or the housing association, may have a a single parent and a teenager in it. Equally, a a large house may be bought by a more affluent family that just had a baby. There's nothing, it's still an assumption. So there's maybe some work to do and looking at that once we've got and particularly things like the upcoming census, when we get that data in a couple of years' time, that will help us. And because it's accessing that data and making sure we've got something tangible to work from is the difficulty we find there. It's a good point. Thank you, answer.
Bern, you just you just referenced two things I was going to bring up. One was the census. So you think that, I mean, that'll provide some interesting data for us, I'm sure, and factor into your modelling. The second was you you spoke about Holton, which is an area I represent. Having spoken to the developers there who have been proactive in bringing forward the schools, St Gabriel's and Holton School. And they are selling houses more quickly than they anticipated now. And with Covid, which is referenced in the report, how how do you intend to try and factor? And how fluid will the document be, the the strategy be in terms of reacting to the implications of Covid? For example, people may choose to move away from cities to places like Warwickshire and to big developments such as Holton.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Holton is a really, really good example. And I met with the 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 school there and the developers recently. And they're providing, going to provide with the data of their occupation occupancy rates, because it is slightly different. And the current people yields we have worked out are based on the last census, as was. And and the the recent new housing that was at that time, so like the Warwick Gates of the world and and the Corstons in Rugby. And it was the best dataset, the largest dataset we had to work on. It's also something we will look at the new census for and look at the current houses being built and see just what's actually happening on the ground. But Holton and developers, because they are tracking everything, and so who moves in and what kind of makeup those families are, maybe give us a bit of a microcosm on that. I've got an early peek of what the new census will give us. And so that's a bit of work we're going to be taking uh over the summer possibly, when we've got some contact from Holton. And just have a look, just seeing, are our assumptions correct? And but you're right, they are building houses incredibly quickly. And and the thing about people moving out from from cities into like leafy shires is definitely something that's on our radar. And again, it goes back to that that flexibility in the school system, how many, keeping some capacity for in year movement. And but also making sure that we are, we've got our capital schemes geared up and ready to go. And so, for example, if we did new school, we're making sure that we've got the funding in place, as much as we can in place in the background. And possibly the design drawn up and sitting on the shelf ready to go, having some more of ready schemes that we can pull off quickly when things change. And because they will change all the time, so it isn't very much something we have to keep an eye on and monitor closely. And and actually, in our forecasting model, yes, we publish it once a year and submit it to the DFE once a year, but we keep it as a live model. So we track all housing developments across the county. A colleague of mine has that, as you can imagine, a very riveting job of checking which housing developments have been approved. Are their housing trajectories they've given us um or published still accurate? And example, we've had some developments where they stopped for two or three years, north of Rugby being one example. And but the housing strategy from the from the district of Borough still says they're building our houses. We know, using our local intention, that's not happening. So we do make some assumptions, push them with our housing back to try and give us a more accurate, realistic picture of what's going on. So that when we come to implement our capital schemes, the data we're basing on is is as real time as it possibly can be. The annual publication is the starting point and then it's reviewing it. And has anything changed? Has anything significant happened? And particularly with the growth in the housing in the area. Have any of those big strategic sites been approved recently? Have any more come along? Have any um large scale housing sites been lost at appeal and gone through on developers' women rather than the 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 planning process? And so it is something we have to monitor and and make sure we can respond as and when we need to.
Thank you. Jonathan, did I cut across you? Were you going to come back in with a follow up point to your earlier question?
No, I had another question, so I was waiting my turn again.
All right. Margaret, over to you.
Uh thank you. Yeah, I think Jonathan and and Yusuf have their questions have shown the complexity of responding to developments. And I think we all you have our sympathy because it must be a nightmare. And so, but but I I go back to my first point really, which is it for me, they're they're, I'm making it very simple, but you've got the development side. And then you've got the, we know the children, they're coming through the system side, which which is relatively straightforward because the children are there, assuming they don't all disappear off to another area. And I'll just go back to the Hartstill um development, just as an illustration really. So first of all, I'd like to say that the DFE has made our life even more difficult by their approach. I mean, they were absolutely adamant that they want to start on site in September. And we all agree that the priority is that this school must be rebuilt and nothing that we do must upset that. So I'm I'm with you on what we're doing. However, as you know, we've had meetings on this and it's agreed that we need more places at Hartstill School. That that extra, sorry, I'll just get rid of that. That extra um class that I was talking about will hit the high school um in September twenty twenty three. So and and we've said behind the scenes that we need to uh put an extension on that school. I mean, it's it seems ridiculous, doesn't it? We're having a new school, but we're already talking about the extension. But that's how we have to do it, and I accept that and I understand why. But we need to do that because we haven't even taken into account the developments that are going on. And and as Dan has said, there are seven hundred houses actually in progress going down Plough Hill Road, which is one of the catchment areas. And we haven't taken that into account in the extra class that we need. So what I'm saying is it's the timing and we need to be working on it now. And I know we had our meeting, you also said you have to bring into it priorities. And I know we had our meeting, you also said you have to bring into it priorities. And, and I, I'm struggling with that a little bit because it's our, our responsibility to make sure there are school places. And I understand there are pressures in other parts of the county. But if there's a pressure in our area, there's a pressure. And I had a look at the sufficiency strategy that was recently produced. Every secondary school in North Warwickshire is under provided for for the next five years. So there's nowhere else for these children to go. So are we going to start immediately, uh, working on this extension at Hartsill? Or one of the other schools, wherever it's appropriate? Because we've got a real problem and I don't want to see a whole forest of temporary classrooms going up because it's expensive. And neither do I want the children shipped out. We've got children going out of county in our area because we can't, we haven't got spaces. And that's costing us money in school transport. So that's another measure that we ought to look at at this committee is how much are we spending unnecessarily, basically, on home-to-school transport because we haven't got the school places in our county? So, you know, can we start immediately on this extension is my question.
Well, thank you, councillor. I think on the, on the extension, um, it will be very high on the priorities. This is one of the schemes that I would very much like to have open and ready on the shelf, ready to go as soon as the, the existing bill is completed. And we know that for certain that the pressure's coming and ready to go. So yes, there's definitely some work to do with the DFE on their scheme and making sure that we can, we can dovetail into that, the back end of it as much as possible. The example of the, of the secondary schools in North Warwickshire, yes, you're exactly right. This, the current forecasts do show that all secondary schools in North Warwickshire are, are oversubscribed. And this is also talking about a parent of preference. All of those schools being on the county or very close to county borders attracts large numbers of children from outside of Warwickshire. And, and this is where, when they apply for year seven entry, we have no way of preventing them from applying and accessing those spaces if they are available. So often, in case in, in all those schools, in fact, and there will be thirty, forty children per year group, if not more, that actually are out from outside of Warwickshire, that aren't part of our staff's duty to provide places for. At year seven entry over time, as, as our, as our cohorts grow within Warwickshire, there'll be some pushback. Those children will not be able to access those spaces anymore and will push back into the authorities. And we do work with our colleagues across the border so that we can't, we're trying to align our forecasting model as much as we possibly can with those. Commentary, we're very good doing that. We have conversations with Staffordshire, um, Worcestershire all the time about what's going on and what's going to happen to cross-border movement. And so there is a, a certain amount of that, that the cohort, the existing cohorts or communities those schools are serving will change over time. It will become more Warwickshire-centric, they will push more children back. But that doesn't address the issue of, of families moving into the area in year because those schools are, are, are full. And, and this is where it is the difficulty that if we were to put additional classes on at those schools wholesale, they are so popular, they would fill immediately from out of county. And so the next family to move in would still struggle to find a school place in the area. And, and all we'll be doing is to stabilise the schools across the border and causing great expense to, to Warwickshire. So there is a, a amount we have to work with those, particularly for secondaries, it's a bit easier at secondary, to work with those schools to take additional children over what they've got at their pan. And secondary schools can look at their timetable and look at the sites they've got because they are much bigger beast than their primary school. And fit more children in a few around the edges, as it were. And so it is just a case of working with them and making sort of some flexibility for that in-year movement. And but yes, knowing what the next step is in expansion is definitely something we need to have off for all those schools. So that when it's time to do that, we've got it ready and we can, we can dovetail into those, those existing schemes. I think on the, on the homeschool transport, that's a good point. And I should start, so there's myself and my colleague, Ambassador Smith, is currently on maternity leave. And Nikki Daly is currently covering that post. And as well as this role, the sufficiency and capital role, I have the admissions commissioning role. And my colleague Emma has the homeschool transport commissioning role. So both elements, admissions and homeschool transport are very much part of the, the education sufficiency world. And we're responsible for commissioning both those services while us dealing with the capital and the sufficiency elements. So it is something that my colleague Emma is very keen to keep the, the cost down on homeschool transport. As much as used to make sure, we are, to make sure there's enough school places in Warwickshire as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jonathan, back to you.
Thank you. A slightly different type of question. So in term, for us, the larger area we look at sufficiency, the easier it is for us because we can smooth over some of the, the things. But for parents, um, they tend to want us to look at sufficiency in a more localised area. So, um, somebody in South Leamington who doesn't get a primary place and we're saying, well, actually, we're still within sufficiency because we're sending you to Lillington. They're going to go, well, that's not sufficiency because that's not a suitable place. So my question is, at the moment, do you feel like we've got the geographical areas right that we work within? Or do you think they need tweaking?
Thank you. So we, we break it down into, to planning areas. At secondary, they're quite large, they cover generally the, the second school's priority areas or a couple of second school priority areas. At primary level, we try to make it and we revise these, I'd say, four years ago now with the DFE. There's something we have to agree with the DFE because it's what our SCAP allocation is based on, our funding allocation DFE is based on. And they're usually about six to eight schools. Some of them are much smaller, some of them are only one school. And, and actually, the way the DFE have changed their guidance now, some of those smaller areas wouldn't, wouldn't fly, wouldn't be able to get those through now. And we were lucky that we got before the new guidance came in. So we have some smaller areas where it is more local and we can look at it right at the granular level of maybe one school or two schools. And certain areas like South Leamington, uh, Holton Rugby, East Rugby, um, there is, we do need to review those planning areas. And the difficulty is the DFE wouldn't allow us to change those areas until new schools have opened. And, and it's sort of a more critical mass of pupils in those new areas coming from the new houses to prove that we need to hide that area off and make it in its own u- unique area. So South Leamington, the example, is, is the planning area we have at the moment and it does cover everything south of the river, pretty much, exception of Radford, uh, Seminole. So we will be looking to split off the new development areas, so the Heathcateria, the Europower area into one planning area and deal with that more locally than the, the existing kind of old town area. And so it is something that we do keep an eye, but it has to be approved on the DFE because as I say, it's where our funding is based on. And, and yes, for certain families, it will be a difficulty. We don't want them to send them too far, um, for school places. So South Leamington, for me, seems like a, a impossible commute in the morning, um, knowing the area. But equally, we have the, the challenge and the challenge we get back from schools all the time is if you've expanded that school down the road, why can't you just send them here? My numbers are, are low or lower than they would like to be. Um, my, my budget's now at risk. And so there is, there is the balance there and that's something that we're looking at. How can we address that? I think one of the, the strands in the report was how we look at the overcapacity. And how can we reorganise schools in some places? It is a strand of education efficiency that we haven't necessarily need to do so much of in the, in the recent past. And North of Rugby, uh, the Brownsover area, Balthamley area is somewhere we're looking at doing that very shortly with the opening of a new school and reorganising the existing infant junior schools in that area. And just because cohorts have changed, uh, local patterns of households have changed. And so it's time to do a bit of reorganisation there. And that will be something we roll out across the county. We're currently developing, uh, some criteria to identify which schools that needs to happen to. And as you can imagine, it raised lots for the questions. If you tell a school to decrease its capacity, particularly a primary school, how do they absorb the associated costs of Stafforddency as an example? If that's needed or indeed, um, how they adjust their forecast financial figures based on lower numbers in the long term? So there's some, some elements to overcome and that's why we've got to work with those schools to check their local context is right. And but it isn't just a case of shipping them, some children from one area to another to, to plug those gaps. But thank you.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Are there any further questions from committee members? And if not, are we happy with the recommendation as, as set out on page fifteen of the papers? Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. And the one thing I, I would ask is just that we are kept periodically updated. Because I, I'm just interested in the Covid impact, in particular in the inward migration and potentially outward, I guess. But I think it's more likely to be inward and just the, the housing sales, I say accelerating in, in Rugby and the builds are accelerating. So I think it'd be interesting to keep an eye on that and be assured that it's, it's fluid in terms of the strategy.
Yeah, probably.
Okay. Thank you, Ben. That was, that was very informative. Appreciate your time.
Yes, thank you all.
Thank you. On to item six, which is child-friendly Warwickshire, excuse me. And Anita, Dan and Joe, I have down as presenting, if that's correct.
Yes, morning Chair. Yes, I, I can go first. My name's Anita Leckie. I work in the Children and Family Service. And so I hope you've all had a chance to look at the report, but I'll quickly pick out some highlights for you. And the report very much introduces our initiative to become a child-friendly Warwickshire. We want Warwickshire to be a great place for children, young people to live, learn and grow up in. We want Warwickshire, uh, we want children to be safe and secure, happy and healthy and live stable lives. Um, enjoy learning and have job opportunities and them to be involved in our, in the decisions that impact their lives. The initiative comes from Leeds City Council, so who are an outstanding local authority. Their child-friendly Leeds initiative is a core foundation of how they work with everybody in their city. And, and what in Warwickshire, we see this as an extension and further development of our relational practice. And that we are working with our children and families at the moment. This initiative is led by the Children and Family Service, but we would like this to be owned by everybody in Warwickshire. So we want to be working with and strengthen our relationships with families, communities, partners and businesses to inspire a pledge from everyone to improve the lives of children across Warwickshire in any way they can. And we want everyone in Warwickshire to recognise that children are at the centre of our communities and that, that children play a key role in not only shaping their futures, but also in the environment where they live. And, and I was just going to quickly go through how, how we're planning to, to sort of, um, implement this initiative. And so firstly, we're really keen to talk to children, young people. So we'll be sending out a survey to them and where possible, attending some virtual workshops to understand what they think of Warwickshire at the moment and what they would like us to improve. And communication is really key at the moment. And so we already know across Warwickshire that, um, we deliver lots of child-friendly Warwickshire initiatives. But what we want to do is sort of create a strong brand to share and promote some of these key messages and services with everybody in Warwickshire under the umbrella of child-friendly Warwickshire. And, and again, engagement is, is really key. And so we want to try and spread our message as wide as possible and engage with partners and large organisations. I want to invite businesses and partners to have discussions with us around how they can too develop child-friendly Warwickshire initiatives across their networks. And, and obviously would love to work with you and, and the members in this room to help endorse our initiative and, and spread our messages to the communities that you support and to help us develop some child-friendly initiatives where they are specifically needed. So that's sort of a summary, what I've put in the report. Happy to answer any questions with Dan and Joe.
Okay. Thank you very much. Questions? Corinne.
Thank you, Chair. Just, just a thing that I observed. I've got a real weird echo on mine at the minute. I don't know why. And yeah, one of the things I, I observed and experience that I've found with my own children. I, I really like reading through all the sort of examples of our businesses and partners could be involved. Would be great if some of those, um, businesses were willing to offer really worthwhile work experience placements. Because I don't know whether other people have, have found this, but I've got four grown-up children now and trying to find somewhere for them to go and, you know, get a, a, a really decent placement was really difficult. Lots of companies were just not willing to take a young person on for a week. And one, one of my daughters wanted to do graphic design and she is actually, um, at university now, starting that course. But to get her somewhere that was willing to do it was just not impossible. I, I got laughed at when, when I phoned up one company and they just said, we, we just don't do it. We just don't entertain the idea of working with young people. I did eventually get her into, um, in an Eton, Bedworth Borough Council's, um, you know, graphics department. But it was a, a real battle and I felt the same with, with all my children to get them something really worthwhile. And if we want them to stay in our county eventually or come back and work here, then we need to have positive responses from these companies that are going to give them a really good, positive work experience.
Thanks, Cor. Yeah, really, really good point. And yeah, and something that will make sure that we, um, I suppose communicate to business in this large organisation. And I certainly understand it's around having meaningful work experiences as well. So no, thank you for that.
Jeff.
Thanks, Yusuf. Um, I do, I do support this. Uh, and I, I think it's an excellent way forward. Um, I, I wonder if it, if, can you hear me, Yusuf? I've got an echo.
You're echoing though, yeah.
I'll try again. Is that okay? Um, I, I, I wonder if it would be helpful for members of the committee, if Anita or one of the colleagues talked just a little bit about restorative practice itself. I think I know what it means. Um, but I, I think it might be an idea to just to try and drill down on this because this is the philosophy at the, at the heart of everything we're trying to do for children in Warwickshire. And it would be good to explore it a bit. I mean, for instance, who restores what to whom, how and why? I think that would be really helpful to know that.
Um, yeah, I can help, um, with that one, Jeff. So restorative practice is a really big deal in children and families. It's our way of being, something we've adopted as a way that we want to, uh, work with colleagues, work with each other and particularly work with children and families and with community agencies. And it's really recognising that relationships are at the absolute heart of everything that we should do. And that sometimes we lose people on the journey or we lose people on the way. We don't have the right conversations, we don't engage in the right way. And particularly for vulnerable children or complex or adversarial sort of situations. So what we've been doing for the last eighteen months plus, and we've recently got additional funding to take further and faster, is, is adopt that as our kind of preferred approach to practice. So we've got various things that are happening in children and families through sort of, um, training for all of our staff. And we're also rolling out a big awareness campaign in which we're engaging, uh, community agencies, external partners and partner agencies. And there's a number of sort of tangible methods that we kind of use to sort of engage that. We try and place the child at the centre of everything we do. We have the right conversations. So everybody is kind of able to reflect on that. We also introduce concepts of how we support and challenge each other. So we don't get into blockages or, or into situations where we kind of revert back to our silos around how we kind of, um, work separately. Um, we've found some real success with that. And we're, we're, we're starting to see some real evidence that actually that's making a real difference. So we've had some recent feedback from our partner agencies that when they're having meetings with children and family social workers, that there's a different sense to it, there's a different feel to it. It feels more restorative, it feels more child-focused. And we're having better, um, outcomes, or we're starting to see better outcomes. So restorative practice in essence is very much about how we work with people, how we engage with people, how we have shared values and how we keep the child at the centre of, of, of what we do. I think child-friendly Warwickshire is a real, a natural kind of extension of that about how we kind of go further with that. It is very much about the sum of all people. So when we go into communities, we want to be able to have contact with those where children who have contact with it. So it's not just, um, uh, the people who have maybe open or the, the child is open to those agencies. It will be where they spend time, where they spend their recreation, what's important to, to children. So a big question we ask ourselves, what's it like for a child to be, uh, living in Warwickshire? What's their experiences? Um, and bringing that together. So yeah, Jeff, I hope that answers your question, but, um.
I'm not, I'm not absolutely certain that it does, Dan. Um, I mean, uh, I'm with you in spirit, but the trouble is I'm a linguist and I get hung up on words and, and meanings. It's called restorative practice. In, in the justice area, restorative justice tends to mean criminals talking to people that they've, uh, attacked or frauded and, and sort of getting a, getting a dialogue, getting a discussion between them. So that what's, what's, what's gone wrong can be understood and can be moved forward. In the children's area, I mean, are we talking about a bias? For instance, a bias towards restoring the child to the family? Or is it more, is it more complex? I'm, I'm just not quite with this.
So relational practice is, is, is got its roots and origins in restorative practice. But that's, so restorative justice is something that we sort of normally associate with our youth justice service and they use that in a particular way. When we refer to restorative practice, we, we refer to it as in terms of a relational approach to how we practice and a relational approach in terms of how we engage around a child. So I've got your, I've got your hand up, Joe. Do you want to, do you want to come in?
Yeah, there is a whole continuum and it's all about relationship-based. A lot of the children we work with have had harmful relationships or experienced harm from their parents. So some of that is about that reunification, that working out what's going well, building on those strengths, developing the parenting skills and ideally enabling. developing the parenting skills and ideally enabling children to live with their families. So it's very much about that other agenda item about reducing children in care and giving them the ability to live with their families. But it is a whole continuum, so there's community-based relationship practice. Look at lots of community groups where they're working with the residents in that area, working with churches and working together to support the families there. And then you have the other end of that continuum where there's clear evidence where one person has caused harm to another and understanding the impact of that harm enables them to explore what that means, to understand each other and therefore to repair some of the damage. So there is a whole continuum. And I think one of the things that we're really promoting at the moment is having really open and honest discussions with each other. And that's with parents about their strengths, but also their challenges. But also with partners, so different agencies, we've all got different roles and collectively we can support a family together. But I think sometimes historically, there'd be a greater expectation that social care would do some things or education would do things. It is about working collaboratively to actually make a change for the family. And sometimes that means us repairing relationships between each other and misunderstandings and trying to work out who's the best person to support a family. So it is about being flexible to enable the children are supported within their family.
That's really helpful. Thank you. Thank you very much. I'm sorry to press on that, but I think we've, well, I hope everyone's got a clear idea now of that. That's certainly helped me. Thank you.
Pleasure. Thank you.
Nigel, you had your hand up, it's gone down, but Marina also has her hand up. So did one of you want to come in or both?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think Joe's pretty much covered it. I think if we want to be in a really simplistic kind of, get over the linguistic bit if you like, Jeff. I, I think it is about restoring family relationships. And I think that's where the, the origin of the use of the term restorative comes from. But, but the response from Joe actually cover, and from Dan actually covers much more detail, much more in depth. But that is the origin of the word.
Thanks.
Thanks. Marina, did you want to come in?
Yeah, I was just gonna add on to what Joe was saying in terms of the history of restorative practice. And I didn't know whether this would be helpful to know because the origins were in the early seventies in America, where it was actually designed for schools. And what they, they based it on mediation techniques and how people speak to each other. That does not enable shame or blame to get in the way of the situation. So they can resolve an issue in a mediation way. It moved into restorative in terms of youth justice because they found that the reparation element was able to repair harm between a victim and a perpetrator. So that's how it sort of escalated into the youth justice areas. But we're now talking about it quite a lot in our DSL training. And what our schools are feeding back, you know, one of the elements they really like is the concept that by talking to each other in a way which doesn't have shame and blame means, and because we, you know, we're being honest, it's like Joe who said, we know it's a truthful, honest, you know, conversation. But we're not putting people on the spot and creating blame. Families are more open and they're going to talk to us more about what their problems are. And therefore we're able to get in earlier and support them when whatever, whatever level of the situation is. But it enables people to work with us in, in greater depth of their situation. So I was just, I was just gonna add that because I think that might be helpful.
Thanks Marina. Jo, did you want to come back in?
Yeah, Leeds City Council, who are our partners in practice, actually started with restorative schools. And what they found is there was far fewer, children started achieving more, but also there were fewer children excluded because of they started managing behaviour differently. They were doing it with the young people. They were talking about what do you as a group of people think is acceptable behaviour in your school? Where there's relationship difficulties, having discussions between them to resolve it rather than just excluding children. So that's where they started in Leeds and social care followed on from that. What we've done is we've embraced the concept, doing it within social care. But also someone in Dan's team is working with schools as well. There's a number of schools who want to take this further because they see it as a great opportunity to, to have schools a healthier and happier place for children.
Thank you. Dan?
Yeah, thanks, Chair. And just going back to the earlier point about the, the work placements. Actually, I remember my work experience probably 20 years ago now. And at the time, the schools had good relationships with local businesses. If you couldn't find a place, they'd help with that. And there were lots of things in place, but that doesn't seem to be as common anymore. As Corinne said, she had struggles getting, getting the daughter into a graphic design. Well, just getting some experience in that. And I've, I've dealt with that as a business owner, especially for Covid. I've, I've getting a student in for placement through universities, it's not school. But getting them in for placement and actually doing anything was kind of, you know, you're left alone as a business owner. And that does take a lot of time, a lot of resources to come out of your way to kind of develop some kind of training and to make it meaningful for them. To give them something to take away rather than just having someone sit there and do boring tasks and not really getting anything from that. So obviously part of our priorities in the report is to get children ready for the future, get them business-ready. And it talks about our business infrastructure. And my question really is around what we can do as business owners, but also in partnership with the council for smaller business owners to do, to do things where we can take the children on work experience. And obviously with Covid is how we do things remotely or prepare to do things remotely. But be supportive. So if we're not in a place to offer an apprenticeship to a child because we're so small or got lots of remote workers or home workers, that maybe we can give them some kind of training that can then be beneficial to them and to the business. But then obviously give them opportunities to go elsewhere with what they've learned. And for a lot of really small businesses, they are put off, obviously they don't have time for apprenticeships. We've seen some of the really good schemes come out by the government, like the Kickstart Scheme, which is amazing. And there's a scheme at the minute in Birmingham, Birmingham City Council, I'm not sure what they've called it, but another government-funded scheme where they're, they're basically offering to train people for the workplace. And at the end of that, if the workplace can't offer employment, they'll then be helped by the council to go elsewhere. But it's not at any cost to the business, it's basically training them specifically to the needs of that business. Which is perfect, it can help both ways. So it's really what we can do along those lines and what we can do for the changing future and what's happening with, with work practices, like remote working. Have we thought about that or are we putting things in place with that?
Thank, thank you, Chair. That, that was really, really helpful and really, really useful. So we have started conversations with our communities and business colleagues. So Dave Ayton Hills and his colleagues around how we can work with businesses. And I suppose it goes back to sort of restorative practice. It's around, we want to have, invite dialogue with, with those small businesses as around, okay, how can we help you? And how can we help each other rather than us just saying, oh, you know, could you offer an apprentices? It's more about let's have a conversation and how we can work together to support each other. And so we are starting our journey with that and we are working with the communities colleagues to support that further. Jo, I don't know if there's anything you wanted to add or Dan?
I was just gonna, I'm sorry, Jo. Gonna add on to the. Oh, can anybody hear me?
Yes.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, just add on to Anita's point. One of the things that we've kind of learnt on our journey is that actually there's all sorts of contributions that will make a real difference, even if some of them might be perceived as quite small. So Leeds have talked to us about just sort of having conversations with businesses for young people can often be really useful and really helpful. Or just rather that, you know, some, some sort of shadowing opportunities or experiences where they can just spend time with somebody to talk about sort of, you know, thinking ahead. And that might seem quite small, but it's getting sort of young people used to engaging with people like businesses and, or, or being a safe place for young people to kind of, to kind of go or spend time. So I think it might not offer sort of the other end, which is full training. But I think this is sort of, it's a good, lots of people have seen little things that they can do that they wouldn't ordinarily have considered that was on the table. So I think there are lots of opportunities, big and small.
And we've had some success with our care levers around looking at what placements, work placements are available. So we can build on that and we can go back to Leeds and the Birmingham organisation you've mentioned as well to, to learn from other organisations and start implementing that locally.
Thank you. When, when was funding applied for?
Oh, I think.
We were given the funding from.
From DFE.
Not quite sure. Couple of years ago, 18 months ago, 12 months ago. When was it, when was it granted?
The programme started in April last year. The funding was, I can't remember the date that that was started, but we actually started delivering it from the beginning of this financial year.
And there was reference to the notion of shame and blame, Marine in particular, which is absolutely right. And you can, you can take those factors out of an equation mainly because rolling around in the muck never gets anyone clean. But equally, and that's almost an argument about rights. And one thing I didn't really see in this paper at all was the notion of advocating for personal responsibility and resilience amongst young people. And I was wondering, do you think, how important do you think it is in instilling a sense of resilience in our young people? Do you think that that has fallen over recent years? I mean, there is, there is certainly a perception that young people are now less resilient than they were perhaps when I was younger, when everyone in this call was, was younger. Do you think that's fair? And if so, is it because we have shifted to a collective sense of advocacy for rights over responsibility and personal responsibility? And if we are, how are we not setting up our children to fail when they're getting out into the big bad world?
I suppose as, as part of Child Friendly Warwickshire, one of the things that we do want to do is we want to be empowering children and young people. So we have got one specific work stream, which has been looking at how we can champion their voice a little bit and how they can get engaged in, in groups. So for example, we've already got the youth council. But again, it's around how we can help strengthen their voice in terms of, and how can, how can empower them to sort of decide what they would like to do. And I suppose that it doesn't quite answer your question, but I suppose it's a little bit of resilience in around that how we are strengthening the voice of the child and young person.
Okay. Nigel, did you want to come in?
Yeah, I suppose on, on a personal level, I would say my experience of, of looking at this over the years has been that every generation believes that the previous generation was less resilient. I was sorry, was more resilient and subsequent ones are less. I, I, I think the challenges are entirely different. And, and I think that in every generation, they are different and we're looking at different things. And certainly the, you know, the last year has been something that, that very few generations have faced over the previous times. You know, you, you probably have to go back to kind of the Second World War generation to find people who've had a more challenging time, if you like, in some ways. I think that supporting independence is a key part of what we do. And I think that has to remain a fundamental part of our work. And that actually is true across, you know, all of our work, right the way through in terms of schools, in terms of early years, in terms of children's social care, but actually in terms of adult social care as well, right the way through the spectrum. Our focus has been about building on people's strengths, supporting independence, helping people to do things for themselves, not being a, not resorting to our natural instinct, which is to do things for people. Which I think is something that does, you know, really hinder people's independence and people's responsibility. I've given lots of examples about that in the past. And I think that, that, that fundamental kind of underpinning element of restorative practice, which is about that you do things with people, not to them or for them, is actually at the basis, kind of the heart of your question, really.
Yeah, it is. And with, with young children, obviously you don't do the things for them they can do themselves, like dressing at a certain age. And with older, older people, grandparents, even when we're in a home, let them keep that sense of independence, otherwise they can give up. People should always be encouraged to do what they can for themselves. Okay. And Jo, did you want to come in, your hand on this?
Yeah, in the continuum of restorative practice, there is that restorative justice bit, which is very much an offender and a victim sitting down and explaining what's happened, what the impact it's had on them. And the key thing around that is about understanding and also taking responsibility for behaviour and actions. And that is the far end of the restorative practice continuum. But it is embedded throughout, so it would all be about what have you done? What's the impact on somebody? How can we repair that? How can you understand that? How do we move forward? What are the solutions? What are the ways we can build that together to do things? So within that, there is responsibility. And I think also where that's been done in schools and within classroom management, there is that building of resilience, that openness about how it feels when people act in certain ways and that open dialogue, which really supports classrooms managing a lot better. So I think within that is responsibility. In terms of the general point about wellbeing, we're tying in with the state of the nation 2020. So we will be looking at wellbeing throughout that. So that will be promoting resilience, looking at self-harm, suicide prevention, all the things that are really essential part of our day-to-day work.
That's something we've built as well, of the difficulties and dangers they face, which I certainly didn't, many of us did, was is social media and, well, not the internet, but particularly social media. And there are, there are a number of studies which show that since 2008 and nine, the self, the numbers of self-harm, particularly in young, in young girls and teenage girls is, is rising astronomically. And it does correlate with the advent of social media. So, okay, interesting point. Okay, Margaret?
Thanks very much, Chairman. Yeah, thank you for this report. It is extremely ambitious. Not that, I mean, that's not a criticism, that's recognition of, of what you're intending to set out. So in section three, where you put the outcomes and measures, there's many places across the organisation that we're very much like, who share those ambitions, not least this committee actually. And there's a lot of people working on this and, and it's great if you can contribute to getting those outcomes. I do think it's a huge challenge, but well, that's no reason why I shouldn't do it. It's a huge challenge. But yeah, I, I just, I suppose some, some outcomes and measures which are more readily and in a short time scale achievable would have been interesting. So that we could say, well, next year we'll come back and see whether this, this and this has improved. That would have helped a lot. The bit that really got my attention was in 5.1, which you've actually mentioned, Anita, in one of your responses, strengthening the voice of children and young people in local decision-making. And, and we know that in this committee, when we've had the young people to come and talk to us, it's been extremely powerful. So I would be very interested in, in understanding how that can be done across the organisation and what the appropriate decisions would be, the impact on them and how they can really influence them. And just going back to what Youssef said. However, I do think, hope that this is also an opportunity to say to the children, well, you've brought forward an issue for, that we need to consider, but you can also do this for yourself. And I think that is a really important aspect of this, to support the young people to do things for themselves and indeed to influence what we do. So I suppose I'm saying, well, it's a really ambitious project, good, and how do we keep, how do we keep a hold on what's happening and is it being successful? I'd like to understand.
Thank you, Chair. So that, that's, that's really, really helpful. And I suppose, I suppose it is helpful to say in terms of Leeds' child-friendly initiative, that they've, they've been on their journey for about eight or 10 years now. It's not, it's, it's, it's no quick fix, it's not something that we can sort of do in a year. It is about, you know, continuing to develop those child-friendly Warwickshire initiatives and those messages and those relationships. But I totally take board on your point around how do we measure the impact of this? Even if it is just after six months or even if it is after a year. And more than happy to come and, and talk to you again around, you know, what we've achieved in the year. And in terms of the, we are working on a sort of framework for consultation with young people. So we've got a small task and finish group set up. Where we recognise at the moment, we have got a number of groups. So for example, we've got the Children in Care Council, we've got the Youth Council. And we've also got the Warwickshire Youth Alliance. So we already know that we are, there are a number of groups of young people who would like to be involved in decision-making. But I think what we're trying to do with the framework is just to put a clear infrastructure around that and also to promote it. So, so for example, a lot of people from different partners will say to us, we really want to talk to children, young, young people about this specific topic. And nine times out of 10, we will sort of direct them to the children. And nine times out of 10, we will sort of direct them to the Children in Care Council. But then we want to widen that and recognising that, look, we have got a larger network. Let's put a bit of infrastructure around it, but without sort of bombarding them with lots of questions. So we're sort of starting that journey at the moment too.
Margaret, do you want to come back in as well?
No, that's, that's fine. Thank you, Youssef.
Yeah, thanks, Youssef. And thank you very much for this report. I think it's really helpful. And I, I'm a great believer in small steps and I think we have to take small steps before we can make big achievements. But just tell you a little story about when we had business. I had a business for 14 years. We owned a hotel. And one day I had a letter from a teacher about a young man who was proving to have all sorts of difficulties at school. Just ask him if he could come along for a couple of hours a week. And he came along and he just did a few hours a week, wouldn't talk to anybody, but eventually came out of his shell. And I think developing his confidence, just by that one small step, he is now a quite successful young person. And I think we just need sometimes somebody who can advocate for young people in a very positive way without overriding them or without disenchanting them and enabling them just to move forward in their life. And I think the restorative practice is really important here because it is underpinned with the legislation as well. And we are supposed to work together. But I think we have to think outside of the box sometimes. And sometimes a little simple letter to a business will make a huge difference for a young person. And I think we just need to engage in that way to make sure that we are all thinking collectively, rather than thinking in our separate boxes. The child at the centre of everything that we do.
Jonathan.
Thank you. Just a brief response to your really fascinating question, Youssef. That's like a pint in the pub conversation, if we can ever do that again. But yeah, my, just on resilience for children, I think my children through primary school have been given more tools. They're probably more resilient than I was at the same age because they have talked about what it means to be resilient, that they're going to make mistakes, that they should take risks, but it's okay when you fall down, you get back up again. So I've been really impressed by the primary school with my children in terms of resilience. And then the second point was on the empowerment thing. And I think that's a really interesting, important thing to think about because I've met so many people in my kind of professional through homelessness and addiction and, but also children and teenagers who just don't believe they have any impact on those around them, either positive or negative. They don't believe they have agency. And so I think when you get into restorative practice and you're saying, well, let's talk about the impact that you're having on others around you. I do think that feeds into the responsibility in potentially a really powerful and positive way. Because just saying to them, look, you are having this impact. You have a choice whether that is a positive impact or a negative impact is, is really important. But you're right, you know, that, that sense of responsibility and agency is so important.
Okay. Nigel, did you want to come in on that?
Yeah, I just wanted to pick up on a practical example, really, of Jonathan's point, because I think it's really well made. Last week, we, I, a couple of colleagues had a meeting with the Chief Social Worker for England, who came to us to talk to us about the Baby Box Project, which is a project that was thought of, developed and implemented by one of our care experienced young people who was one of our apprentices and now works for us full time. And I think Les has talked to you before on this subject. But part of that discussion and what the chief social worker picked up is the impact that young people have had coming into our services. So the fact that we have these apprentices, you know, within children and families, about seven or eight apprentices, a couple of them moved through into full time employment, that people, professionals working with them are thinking differently. And it is really clear that they are having the opportunity to really influence what we do and change the way we think about some of our practices. Now, I think that is really well embedded in children and families now. But I think the challenge for us as an organisation is how do we make that real for universal services as well as for those specialist services? Actually, how is it that all young people, wherever they are from and in whatever circumstances, feel that they have that ability to influence services, to influence what we do? And I think the Youth Parliament is a starting point and the arrangements around that. And I think we've got work to do to strengthen that moving forward. And engage it more closely with our decision making bodies. So that actually you're aware of what the Youth Parliament is doing on a regular basis, what they're thinking, what influence they have, so that cabinet are, so that the council is. And I think, but I think that again is only a starting point. I think the whole point of Child Friendly Watch really is about how we capture what all young people think, what all young people want, and how we engage them and give them that sense of empowerment. And I think if, you know, I recognise Margaret's challenge and I think she's absolutely right. But I think if we can achieve that, it will be a massive shift in the whole thinking of the organisation, but also of the county.
Okay. Dominic.
Thank you, Chair. It's been really interesting to sit here for that kind of 20 minutes, half an hour and listen to this debate and the ideas and things that are coming forward. It's such an important subject, such a wide ranging subject, and we really do have a responsibility to kind of get it right. There's one thing that really stood out to me, and this idea of resilience that you talked about, Youssef, and a few of us have picked up on. And it's something you mentioned, Joe, about the work you have between people who've been convicted of crimes and working with victims. I've done, I've got a bit of experience reading up on compassionate focused therapies. Or I particularly, she works in psychotherapy and particularly focuses on that compassionate side of things. I'm just really interested in dying down a little bit on that. In terms of a therapeutic strategy that you have running through this, are you focusing on more compassionate focused therapies? Getting people together, talking about emotions and feelings, identifying those, becoming more empathetic? Is that a therapeutic approach that you guys are taking throughout this? A bit of a kind of golden thread running through it, if that makes sense?
Yeah, I think within the whole of restorative practice, we're providing extra training for our practitioners to hold those quite difficult, complicated conversations, not necessarily as therapists, but as facilitators and enablers to hold people in that space where they explore that really, whether that's within a family, whether it's between professionals or whether it's within the team, because all teams of people have dynamics and difficulties at times. So it supports that teamwork and support. So it is that model of systemic practice where the whole system around a child, around a worker supports them to have open and honest, empathetic conversations. And really to understand why other people are behaving in the way they, they are in order to understand their own behaviour and to affect the change so they can meet each other's needs better, whether that's in a family or within a staff work group or a manager supervisor relationship.
Could I just come back?
Yes.
And you mentioned that you're providing training to staff in that kind of that therapeutic approach. What specific training are you looking to roll out? Is it to all staff? Is there a particular programme that you're looking to implement? Is there a budget to support that? And what kind of time scales would you be looking on delivering some across your staff base?
We've already delivered three days training to all our practitioners. We've been doing that over the last two years. All that was funded from some of the transformation money from children and families that we've had. Someone in Dan's team is delivering that with a couple of colleagues. They're doing it to practitioners. They're doing general training and we've split that into five modules so that they deliver it in more condensed episodes, but also allow people the opportunity to reflect upon their practice in between. So it's more sort of building on skill set as well as knowledge. That team are also delivering training to other partners. Dan can probably provide more information about that, but education, health, police have all attended that. We've changed the way we're doing a lot of things. We're redesigning the forms that we use to support our conferences, to support our assessments, so that we're really embedding the principles and values of restorative practice into all the documents. So they work as tools to support social workers when they're out and about. So that families, when they receive their assessment, we're changing the whole approach. We do that. So it's about sitting down at a coffee table, either virtually or in practice, where you look at a plan together about what needs to change. How soon can we do different bits? And that's quite a skill set. So we're providing individual support to teams and practitioners to develop their skills as well. So it's very much responsive to the needs. And a lot of our managers are really enthusiastic about moving this forward. We're having lots of positive feedback. There was one I read recently, which is a parent whose previous children had been adopted. So really significant impact we'd had in her life. She just felt the conversations she had with social workers were different. She felt like she could be open. She could say she was struggling, what she was struggling with and actually get the support she needed, rather than just pretending everything was okay or saying what she thought would allow her to have the children. So that more open dialogue. She's contacted us and fed back about how positive that feels. So I think we are significantly shifting. We've still got a way to go. But really positive about how relational practice is enabling us to have those open discussions, to make sure the right support's provided for children.
That's great. Sounds like a positive journey here, moving in the right direction. So that's really good to hear. Thank you very much for that, Joe.
We're also just starting some training around systemic leadership, but also for practitioners in terms of trauma informed practice. You've probably heard about that. It's Dr Treshman who's delivering it over the next year. That's also been funded from the transformation money as well. So that allows us to go to sort of a deeper level to understand the trauma that people have experienced in their lives. But also the trauma that people experience as part of being a community and sort of getting upriver and trying to affect change and make our services more responsive to the people we work with. So that's like an added complexity. It won't make any of our practitioners or managers therapists in that way, but it will enable them to, to respond more appropriately to what they see and experience and to understand some of the behaviours. For example, some of the parents we work with can be quite difficult to engage, but it's about seeing what's happened to them to make them who they are now, for us to understand how to work with them better, rather than actually just seeing an antagonistic relationship.
Corinne, your hand was up and now it's down. Was it down deliberately or did you?
Yeah, no.
So any further questions for Anita, Joe or Daniel? If not, are members happy with the recommendation? So on page 35. Shout out. If you're not.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you. Thank you to Anita, Joe and Daniel for your time. That was interesting.
Thank you.
Okay. On to item seven, which is the work programme. The next meeting is on the 20th of April and you'll see what we presently have on the agenda. Is there anything pressing that people want to add now? Or would you like to do what we usually typically do? Go away and if we do have to think about it and we do want something on the agenda, email and deal with it through the chair and spokes meetings? If there isn't anything pressing that people want on there, then happy to go with the latter approach. I'll take silence as consent to move on. Okay. All right. Okay. So the date of the next meeting is the 20th of April and we will still be on Teams. I do wonder when we won't be. And on to item nine, which is confidential reports, which is reports containing confidential or exempt information. To consider passing the following resolution, that members of the public be excluded from the meeting for the items mentioned below on the grounds that their presence would involve the disclosure of exempt information as defined in paragraph three of part one of Schedule 12A of the Local Government Act 1972. Are you happy with that recommendation, that resolution?